I call this HB 581, number three, hearing to order. Mr. Adams, purpose of the hearing.
Good afternoon, Board members and Dr. Branch. Before we get started, I do want to let everybody know there's a sign-in sheet and we do have some handouts in the back of the room for those here in attendance. I want to remind everybody, the purpose of the hearing is to provide information on HB 581 to the Board and the community and to listen to any thoughts from Oconee County residents. What opting out means, local control, customized for our community. What opting in means, state control, a one-size-fits-all. On November 5th, 2024, House Resolution 1022 was on the statewide ballot. It read, "Shall the constitutional Georgia be amended so as to authorize the General Assembly to provide for gen-- by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit the increases in the assessed value of homesteads by which any county, consolidated government, municipality, or local school system may opt out of upon completion of certain procedures." The measure that passed gives the state the authority to offer property tax relief through a statewide homestead exemption, but also allows local school districts to decide if they want to participate. The law requires the intent to opt out be advertised in the newspaper of general circulation and show evidence of public hearings. The Board is required to hold three hearings for the purpose of listening to the public on any thoughts they have on this matter. The first hearing was on January 23rd at 6:00 p.m., the second hearing was January 28th at 6:00 p.m., and the third and final hearing is today, February 3rd at 4:00 p.m. What is HB 581? HB 581 is a floating homestead exemption that limits the annual increase in property tax assessments to the federal inflationary rate from the prior year. The state will set that amount of homestead properties can increase at a yet-to-be-determined inflationary rate. Some tenants of the law, school districts have one opportunity to opt out of the legislation. If they do not opt out, the cap will begin in 2025 based on the 2024 values. If they do opt out, they must follow an opt-out process. Projected impact, Oconee County Schools projected the local revenue it would have collected over the last seven years would have decreased by $13.9 million. As you can see in this chart, we assume the CPI, and if we use that for the inflationary rate, the last three-year average is $2.7 million or an $8.1 million decrease in our The changes in HB 581 could significantly impact property taxes revenues for Oconee County school system. The change would impact flexibility to meet local needs and maintain competitive salary and benefits. And as a reminder, we are funded 54% by the state and 46% by local funds. The property taxes that make up that 46% fund part of our district salaries as well as transportation, school supplies, and curriculum. HB 581 would limit the taxable values for homestead properties, thereby reducing the amount Oconee County Schools receives, as shown in the previous chart. With the inflationary rate capped by HB 581, Oconee County Schools may have to increase the millage rate to maintain the level of service we offer to Oconee County students. The millage rate is the primary means available to school districts to raise funds to ensure they can maintain educational services and resources for their students. School districts are limited in the number of mills they can levy each year. For fiscal year '25, Oconee County Schools' millage rate is 14.25 mills. The maximum millage rate for schools, districts, is 20 mills. And for the last 10 years, Oconee County Schools has lowered or maintained the millage Oconee County Schools has gone from 17.5 mills in 2014 to the current 14.25 mills, a decrease of 3.25 mills. At the same time, we-- Oconee County Schools has grown by two schools and about 1,450 students. A current mill is approximately 3.5 million or the equivalent of 34 teachers. Also, this chart obviously shows we have not raised the millage rate. Oconee County Schools has only one chance to opt out. The process must be completed by March 1st, 2025. Therefore, there is not another chance to opt out even if the legislation causes significant issues to Oconee County Schools' funding and cash flow. This is a one-time decision with a long-term financial impact. There is no sunset to this legislation, and OCS's funding gap could continue to grow. It is important to note that this decision to opt out will not affect any existing homestead exemptions. School districts are not authorized to assess an additional penny sales tax. Oconee County's financial obligations are continuing to increase annually. As I mentioned in our last two meetings, we've heard that our healthcare premiums are going to go up for classified staff. That's going to be around $600,000 a year that'll average out to. We also have just read that our TRS is going to go up. That's an estimated $400,000. So those two figures alone are unfunded state mandates that are coming for us, about $1 Opting out also allows the Board to maintain local control to best meet the needs of Oconee The HB 581 presentation, frequently asked questions document are posted in assembly with the corresponding meeting dates mentioned earlier. The hearing dates and times have been posted on the school district website, social media accounts, and in general circulation newspapers, and all advertisements have been published as required. That concludes my explanation of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Any comments, questions?
Hey, Mr. Adams. I do have a couple of questions. And just to affirm, if the system were to opt out of this legislation, it does not impact any of the homestead exemption changes that the local voters voted on in 2024 and subsequently passed?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I did see on Slide 7 how you were showing the millage rate, the accumulation of funds over time, for lack of a better term. So the first five mills of property taxes that are paid by our local taxpayers are exempt from the inflationary cap, and those first five mills are then used to reduce state allocated monies that come to Oconee County because Oconee County does not receive any fair share allocation.
That's correct.
Okay. But there are other systems that do receive fair share allocations that are funded by those, in part by those first five mills.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I have a clarifying question. It may be also about Slide 7. When it comes to that graph where we saw over the past 10 years went from 17.5 mills down to 14.25 mills, that's a steady decrease, which I think we could all agree is a great thing. Is it fair to say the tax revenue during that time steadily increased or stayed the same? What do we see with that?
I'd have to go back and look at all-- the historic, to go back and look at it, but I know that the digest has gone up.
Okay. So despite the fact that we lowered the mill, it consistently went up because of values. That had been a big help with that. So with this issue, whether we were to opt out or opt in, as the voters have asked us to do, our tax digest is still not limited from growing. Is that correct, whether it's from new development that comes online, commercial property tax that comes in, commercial development? All of that is still fair game, and also value that is realized in a home sale. We could still realize an increase in tax revenue because of that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Public Communications, Mr. Calquitt.
Mr. Rinsom, excuse me, we have eight citizens sign up to address the Board. And before I invite them up, I'll read this. Policies BCBI and BCBIR-1 state that only Oconee County residents or school system employees may address the Board and that members of the public shall conduct themselves in a respectful manner that is not disruptive to the conduct of the Board's business. The Board allows three minutes for those who sign up prior to the meeting. Please state your name, address, and topic. The Board requests that you refrain from making any disparaging remarks about school system personnel. Surely, there will be no response to comments or questions posed by citizens at the meeting. All comments and questions will be taken under advisement by the Board. However, any Board member shall be free to respond and make public comments if he or she elects to do so. To any citizen wishing to provide documents for Board members, please submit them to the Director of Communications before the meeting or prior to addressing the Board. Please remain at the podium during your public comment time. Our first citizen is Robert Wazorick.
Thank you. I go by Ed, by the way.
Ed?
I'm Ed Wazorick. I live at 1460 Cooper Gen Road, Statham, up in Dark Corner. I've been a resident of Oconee County this time for almost 11 years. However, I've been closely associated with this county and many of its residents for more than 50 years. I choose to live here and pay school taxes even though my wife and I have no children. We do enjoy the activities associated with the excellent schools here and are happy to call this home. My wife was raised here and graduated from Oconee County High School and says that she remembers when the county school's administrative staff consisted of the superintendent and his secretary. Relative to the issue under discussion, it appears to me that the initial absurdity was when lawmakers put an issue to the voters and included an opportunity for as few as three people to overturn the voter's choice. Now you have been presented with the opportunity to go against the will of almost 65% of the voters in this county, and I've only heard one of you indicate the willingness to side with voters. Last year, the Oconee County Commissioners held several town hall sessions where this bill was discussed, explained, and promoted. I don't know about all voters, but I voted with some level of confidence that I understood the issue and made an informed decision. I admit that I was either not aware of the opt-out provision or that I mistakenly assumed that those who would eventually face that decision would do so with their constituents' preference in mind. What I do not understand is why, if the Oconee County Board of Education members at the time were not in favor of the bill, you did not do more to explain your position to the voters and/or encourage opposition to the bill. Instead, the perception is that your plan, if the voters approve the bill, was to exercise your opt-out provision. Your major concerning factors appear to be that income will be significantly reduced. I don't see that happening with the continuing growth in Oconee County and new families continuing to locate here. Add that to the commercial growth, and the future looks very bright. However, in the unlikely situation where revenues were to decline, you would simply be put in the same situation many of us face every day, how to do the same or more with less. We can't budget based on our wants but try to get by with our most urgent needs. As you should be aware, there's also a movement in this country towards government efficiency. I think we need to get ahead of the curve and start looking at how to be more efficient. It appears to me that this approach would better prepare the Board for future potential fluctuations in income. I think the real problem here is the perception. The bottom line is voters will perceive that you're going against their wishes. I understand the school board doesn't hold the authority to implement a special option tax as the county commission does, but you do have the authority to raise the millage rate to a certain predetermined level. I can't speak for everyone, but I'm not impressed by the continuing claim to not raise the millage rate when the revenue from taxes continues to increase every year. To answer Mr. Hammond's request, it has increased for the last seven years, the information you provided. Also, the last two years, the percentage increase has been higher under the projected revenue after the cap as compared to the current revenue. Also, the total for the past seven years, under the current revenue, the increase was 36.83%. Under the projected revenue under the cap, 37.40%. So I don't think reduced income is a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I think maybe of Dr. Branch or maybe Ryan as our legislative liaison. Has there been any discussion among the legislature about allowing the school districts to add any kind of sploß or anything like that? Because it seems like, you know, schools' hands are tied a little more than counties when it comes to that ability to generate more revenue. Is that something that ever comes up?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Ian Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, welcome.
Last time, I promise. Adam, to go-- to answer your question, 2018 went from 23.3 million in revenue to 2024 was 36.9 million in revenue. Say yes, it has gone up. As I was saying last time, just move on here. I'm talking about your Frequency Act asked questions. Note here, teacher salaries, technology, and infrastructure, won't be covered. Nothing is ever mentioned about potentially decreasing administration costs. That's a big one for me. Down here, it says opting out ensures the district can better manage its long-term financial needs. No, opting out simply just says that you won't limit your increases to the inflationary rates. Preserving local authority, I will submit to you that the voters are the local authority. And the shift's controlled tax revenues to state guidelines, and that's inaccurate. There are already state guidelines in place. Maintaining the current tax system ensures a customized approach to revenue generation that aligns with district priorities. Again, it's misleading. You're just reducing the base, potentially. Point four, by retaining local control over property tax revenues, the district can continue to prioritize the long-term success of its students and community. You still main control-- still maintain the control. You just might have just a little bit less money to do it with, potentially. Opting out empowers the school district to retain local control. Again, you still have local control. Point five, significant revenue loss, 2% revenue loss is hardly significant. It's 2%. And again, you can up the millage rate to get that. Limited flexibility, I don't understand why you would have limited flexibility. Reductions in staffing, extracurricular activities, and essential programs. Again, no mention of potential cuts to administration costs. Delayed infrastructure improvements, well, that's normally funded with E-Lost and Sploß money, so I don't think this legislation affects it at all. I've only got a minute, but the point I've been trying to make these last few meetings is that it was clear from the-- that you intended to opt out from the very beginning, and the comments that I heard and the numbers I began were essentially a repeat of the Georgia School Board Association, the Georgia School Superintendent's Association talking points. The financial information provided to you by the school system was, I believe, overly simplistic and very one-sided. At no time have I heard anyone say, "This is the will of the voters, and here is how we can accommodate this." It was-- we simply went to, "We need to control the money." While it is understandable that Oconee County Schools may be concerned about revenue, HB 581 does not eliminate property tax revenue growth. It simply moderates it. Schools will still receive increased funding from new construction, business properties, and continued residential growth. The exemption provides a more predictable and gradual increase in tax revenue rather than sudden surges that can burden homeowners. The millage rate will more accurately reflect the taxation of the folks. The reduction in the tax revenue was not a bug in the legislation, it was a feature. I've got some more, but I think you-- I think I've made my point. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next is Roy Byrne.
I'm back again, also, Roy Byrne, 2744 Wild Indian Crossing, Statham, Georgia. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. This is final meeting of opting in or opting out of this House Bill 581. You know, I've-- everybody I've heard speak here, there's no one in favor of opting out. And I think that, you know, the young and the old voted for this bill because we all thought we were going to get tax relief, and we need tax relief. But, you know, my wife and I, we were coming out Hog Mountain Road the other day from Butler's Crossing to 441, and we saw a lot of grading going on. And we wondered, what in the world is this? So we get a little further out, and we see paving going on and pavement already done. And I get to checking on it, and it's a multi-use trail. Now, to me, I know you don't have anything to do with that, but our local government, our county councilman, not councilman, but commissioners, to me, that's a waste of money. Totally waste of money. No telling how many millions of dollars they're spending on these trails that they're talking about building. And that could help us, relieve us with tax-- taxes on the schools. I mean, that money could go to the schools if you really need it. And I just-- I just don't agree with what they're doing, and I'm going to be against that. I'm going to start going to the commissioners' meetings anyway and voice my opinion on that. But anyway, and salaries, I agree with everything that's been said here so far today, but I see where you all have been given 5% salaries, salary increases. You know, we get, us senior people, we get 2.5% raise on Social Security. I haven't seen a 5% increase in probably 40 years. But I worked at a manufacturing facility in Athens for 38 years. In 1991, we took a pay cut. I mean, a tremendous pay cut because they said they were going to close the business if we didn't, and we did. Now, I don't believe in pay cuts, but I do believe in freezing salaries. So I think if you're in need, we can freeze some salaries here. And none of us wants to deprive any kid of a good education, but we do need to get back to common sense with our spending in all departments of government in this county. And, and, oh, I'm out. Anyway, and I want to add this. I think it's time, I'm speaking on behalf of the seniors, I think it's time to give the seniors a relief, exempt status on these school taxes like other counties has done in around the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Charles Hunt.
Mr. Hunt, welcome.
Charles Hunt, 1080 Sam Cooper Road. And again, I'm also revisiting you, but I'm just wanting to clarify, I want you to opt in. I think that Oconee County Schools are-- stand out because of the families and the faculty that you've helped collect and the families that have been attracted to the school district. I am able now with more confidence than last week to say that the digest is 60% residential and 40% commercial and other real estate. So I do think that all of the commercial growth is taking a little burden off our shoulders, and this opt-in would take a little bit more. I think the increase by way of the inflation rate is more realistic than the fair market value that jumps up and down and sideways. In fact, I guess we're obligating ourselves to continue to pay 2% or inflationary growth even if this home prices drop or we have another 2008. We're sort of implying that we're willing to do that, steady growth rather than jumping around. I think it's good for the households that have the students in it and not just the seniors that you've seen before you, and therefore, I encourage you to consider to opt in and let this tax break go into effect.
Thanks.
That's all the time I need.
Next is Bob Smith.
Mr. Smith, welcome.
First, I want to acclimate without my time being used up. Several years ago, I was looking at the budget in the city of Watkinsville, and seven straight years of bad audits, two identical, two identical material weaknesses. And so I'm going to look at the school board and see what's going on at the school board. And that particular year, I was looking, seven straight years of the same exact things. I said, wow, they cleaned it up. So the school board, I looked at the school board online, and y'all had something that is sort of like that. Then I looked back the next year, it was gone. Y'all had cleaned up your audit, so I applaud you for that. Now, my time, ooh, I ate up 20 seconds of my time with that. So when I was in the legislature in 2006, I introduced two pieces of legislation, one for senior citizens, they needed some help. One was, if you're 65 years of age and older, and you made less than $40,000, then you didn't pay any taxes. You had to pay the bonds, but you didn't pay any taxes. But if you made, if you made over that amount, that's the second piece of legislation for both the school board and the county, that your property were freezing, were frozen. So if you had $150,000 house in 2006, and it goes to $500,000 today, you're still paying taxes on $150,000. But then comes along 10 pieces of legislation. I've never understood why they stripped my two pieces of legislation that were saving senior citizens money for 10 pieces of legislation that the voters vote on. I still, to this day, don't know what the 10 were. And so I'm trying to wade through what y'all are faced with. I don't envy you whatsoever, but I'm trying to wade through what's really happening here. Because I've always understood, it's my time in the legislature and as an adult in the real estate world for a long time, it's that the county government has the final say in anything because they are constitutional. They're constitutional. Like, City of Watkinsville is a licensed city. You can take the license away, but you can't take the county away. And so my thought is, is why doesn't the county, if you decide to do whatever, the county has to make that final determination? If not, then I've missed the boat there. But I'm concerned that, I walk in this building here, and when I was a kid, I'd go barefoot into the Oconee County Courthouse. And you go to the end of the hall across from Mr. Adams's grandmama's probation office, or we called it ordinary at the time, and you go into the school board office, it wasn't even bigger than, say, here to there. And I'm just amazed at this building and how much money is coming into this county and how we spend it and so forth. But my concern, you all, is that when you have 10 pieces of legislation, it confuses people. I'm confused today. Hope you do the right thing and follow the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Pam Hendricks.
Ms. Hendricks, welcome.
Thank you. Pam Hendricks, I live at 1151 Thornwood Drive, Watkinsville. You know, I've been coming to these meetings for two or three years now, and I've just been amazed at the big spending I see. You know, you remember, you give us a one-page budget, and you know, we took a lot of time, and one big thing that came out was showing that on the budget, you have $50,000 as the interest income, and we pointed out that it was $2 million, and that wasn't corrected. You're not listening to us. I feel like this legislation might been a response to the fact that the people don't feel like their school board representatives are listening, and the state decided to step in. And, you know, first of all, this is very odd to me, you know, we're having these hearings, you've announced you're opting out, but then we're having these three hearings. I mean, I'm presuming that maybe you can change your mind. We're having this last hearing at 4:00 p.m. Most people are out working, trying to earn the money to pay the taxes that you're going to assess us with. One thing is, we've been living through these inflationary times. And, you know, I just read Lee Becker's blog this morning, the county is getting $20 million extra dollars because of this inflation. The school system's getting the same. And then we've got this, we've got this dilemma now that suddenly our school enrollment in Oconee is going down. It's declining. And, you know, I think it was COVID. I think parents woke up to what's being taught in the classrooms. They're not real happy about that. I think they found out there were other options because they had to exercise them during COVID. I don't think we know the long-term trend of whether our enrollment is going to keep coming up. Basically, I'll tell you, young people can't afford Oconee County. They can't afford a house here. You know, I'm working with two young men down at my farm in Morgan County, and one bought a piece of property in Greene County, and one's looking at Tolliver County. They can't even afford Morgan County. They certainly wouldn't think of moving here. A young person can't buy a half-million-dollar house as their first house, and yet, that's what, that's all we've got in Oconee County. So we may see our enrollment go down. I mean, it just may become a place that only the rich be-- I mean, it just may become a place that only the rich people can live. And it's partly because I just keep saying, "Y'all are not being good stewards with our tax dollars. You are not." The salaries are ridiculously high. We, you know, this building doubled from the initial estimate of what it was supposed to cost. I just see enormous spending. And one thing we know in America is, spending more on education doesn't increase the results. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks.
Next is Victoria Cruz.
Ms. Cruz, welcome.
Victoria Cruz, 1151 Lake Walbrook Drive, Athens, Oconee County. I don't have a whole lot more to add to what has already been said. The speakers who went before me are certainly much more well-versed on the actual finances, the budget, and what it's going to mean to the citizens. As a senior citizen, my husband and I both, unfixed incomes, Social Security now, and what we've saved. I just look at the school board as this bottomless pit, the school system as a bottomless pit. You know, you say, "Oh, we've kept the millage rate down," but as Mr. Hammond pointed out, the revenues have gone up. And you have this amazing control over how you can raise salaries for all of your employees, whereas the citizens don't have that. I can't tell them to raise Social Security, and my husband's no longer employed, and, you know, the taxes will keep going up, the revenues you take in will go up, but yet there is no accountability for how you're spending it. I was going to make a comment about this building and the cost overruns. It seems like the more money you take in, the more money you will spend. Everyone is now having to tighten their belts. There's a great degree of uncertainty that we're facing now after the presidential election. People might think that all the problems are going to be solved immediately. No. There is a lot that needs to happen at the federal government. It's going to trickle down to the rest of us, and I think the bottom line is, everybody's going to have to tighten their belts. It is just a lot of uncertainty with federal revenues, state revenues. Right now, we have a surplus, but we don't really have a whole lot of control how that's spent. So I just think that you need to look at a bigger picture, do more with less, like most people have to, and just look at the optics of this. Nobody sees this as a good thing. It's almost like all of the school boards, almost all of the school boards in the state decided immediately they were going to opt out. That, to me, is, sounds like collusion and pre-planning. You were planning on it all the time, and just a lack of foresight. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Next is Stephen Alshire.
I'm Stephen Alshire, same address as the previous speaker. I'd like to call this the School Administrator and Teacher Revenue Protection Bill. As of this last Board of Commissioners meeting, we now have anticipated 16 school resource officers. You might say, "Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're on HB581." Well, it's related in my head. This is an example of the elasticity of expenditures which occur, and suddenly we have yet another hole to fill in the budget. And it was anticipated at the meeting that there would actually need to be 16 instead of 12 for the school because of vacation, holiday, and sick. And it said, "Well, you know, 1.6 million sounds like a good number, but I'm sure, I am confident, based on previous experience with budgets, that this will easily go to $2 million per year." So that's an example of things that are yet to be encountered in terms of mission creep and expenditure creep. Now, I have a background, as does Victoria Cruz, in medical examiner work, so we know something about violence and violence in the world. When you have a school resource officer at every school, they're going to become buddies and the teacher's pet, and every student is going to go to them and say, "Okay, Mr. OB, you know, how are you doing today?" I suggest half the number of school resource officers and keep them rotated so that a perpetrator wouldn't know where to go if there was that kind of forethought. In addition, though, most, based on published psychological profiles and post-event reviews, most people could have anticipated and reported the perpetrator of things like happened over in Barrow County a year ago. I'm not trying to diminish the horror of that situation. I'm just saying, what is reality? School shootings are rare, and therefore, school events like in here will be rare, so why are we suddenly having 16 more SROs on the school's dime but also on the school's elastic budget? I suggest half the number at roughly 2/3 of the cost, costs are never linear, and rotate the SRO locations constantly in order to enhance their effectiveness. And I think that's it. Thank you.
That concludes public communication.
Thank you, Mr. Calkwitz. Any final comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Ms. Hendricks, you had said something a second ago about we'd already decided to opt out, I think. That was a language we had to use in order to meet the requirement, so there was no intent to opt out. We're actively discussing it, probably more so than we'll ever let you know. But that was the actual legal ad that had to be run, that the state required us to run. So there was no opt-out before. And I just want to thank everybody for coming in here and speaking because, believe it or not, we do listen, and we'll see how it goes soon. But I do want to thank you all for coming in here and voicing your opinion.
We have no further business for this hearing. Meeting is adjourned.